You're live, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to Order, and we will get started with the invocation. I will call on Counselor Collins, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to be here to serve the folks. Lord, we ask that everything we do is give glory to you, and we ask that of our presentations be in the spirit of collaboration, and we just ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our October 21st, 2025 Regular County Council Meeting.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have Proclamations and Special Recognitions, and I will ask if Mr. Robert, or I'm gonna, hopefully he doesn't mind me calling him, Bob Schaftner will come down to the front and join me for the presentation.
I'm fine, Chairman Blunt.
Is Bob working?
Bob's great. Bob's great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, whereas Bob Schaftner, a native of Ohio and the eldest of five children, began a distinguished career that led him to Greenville, where he would become a dedicated leader and servant of the community; and whereas, following his graduation from Ohio University in 1974, Bob embarked on a successful career in sales and management, culminating in a remarkable tenure of nearly forty-four years at Michel Tire Corporation; and whereas, in 1990, while working in Atlanta, Bob met his wife Beth, and together they moved to Greenville in 1993. I think she's probably here with us. Hello? Raising their two children, Avery and Katie, and becoming an integral part of the community. Whereas a man of deep faith, Bob was an active member of Fellowship Greenville, formerly Southside Baptist Church, and served with distinction on the Board of Directors for Southside Christian School for nearly two decades; and whereas, in addition to his corporate and church commitments, Bob demonstrated an exceptional commitment to civic duty by joining the Greenville County Election Commission in 1997, where he served for twenty-eight years with unwavering dedication ultimately as its chairman; and whereas, after a lifetime of professional achievement and dedicated community service, Bob and Beth Schaftner have retired to their new home in Woodruff, a fitting reward as they begin a new chapter and prepare for their daughter Katie's wedding; and whereas, while he would be deeply missed in his official capacity, Bob's legacy of service, professionalism, and community leadership will continue to be felt for years to come. Now therefore, Greenville County Council does hereby commend and congratulate Mr. Bob Schaftner for his well-deserved retirement and his many decades of exemplary service to the Greenville community. We extend our deepest appreciation for his leadership and commitment and wish him and his family all the best in their retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have appearances on current agenda items. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers. The first is Tracy Byrd, and his topic is the Greater Greenville Sanitation Vacancy.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening tonight, Council. A lot has changed since May. First of all, it's Minister Tracy Byrd, so we finally answered that call. I'll get right to it. If we have the other districts in here, it shouldn't take a monologue to realize that let's do that to the other districts. Whatever you want to do to District 25 and the districts that are affected by this change, I ask a question. If those districts are here, have them stand up and ask them if they want no representation. That's all we have to do. So, it shouldn't take a monologue, just whatever is going on in 25, always ask the other district, or 23, or whatever districts that are affected. Think about if this was my district, like where you live, would I want it done that way? That's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Derek Quarles, and his topic is the Greater Greenville Sanitation Vacancy.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Quarles.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Derek Quarles, and I'm here tonight as a lifelong resident and advocate of District 25. Over the weekend, I was asked to show up tonight and speak regarding the sanitation commission issue, and I was gonna be here anyways, but I was even asked if I was interested in serving on this commission, and I said, no. And the person that asked me is in this room tonight, I won't say who they are, but I said the only commission I want to be on is one that empowers people, that educates people, and employs people who are unemployed. Because while I support keeping a representative from District 25 on the sanitation commission, and that's very important, we've got to acknowledge that this isn't anything new. The same thing has happened before with this council, eight, nine years ago, if my mouth is right. And what it shows is how easy it is for us to get caught up in politics while the deeper problems in our communities keep people, people keep ignoring. The real crisis is not a seat at the table. The crisis is that District 25 has more adults without a high school education or a college degree than any other district in Greenville County. The real crisis is that companies keep coming here with new jobs, but our residents are being passed down because they don't have the certifications or the qualifications. The real crisis is that families are struggling to pay rent, to keep their lights on, and still provide for their children in a city that keeps getting more expensive. The real crisis is that our young people need opportunities, mentorship, and community spaces to grow into leaders, but those resources just aren't there at the level they should be. So, I want to say that I'm gonna continue to fight for our district as everyone here tonight continues to do, and I also want to say let's keep District 25 represented on the sanitation commission because our voices doesn't matter, but let's also make sure that our voice is fighting for education, for opportunity, for housing, and for equity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. We'll start with A. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, South Carolina Farm Bureau Marketing Association, LLC, Project Elevate. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a Joint County Industrial Business Park 2010 of Anderson-Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. We'll move to the next, which is B. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Project Briarwood. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a Joint County Industrial and Business Park, 2010 Park, of Greenville and Anderson Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain properties owned by a company known to Anderson County as Project Briarwood. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed, signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda.
We have approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinances at third reading. We'll begin with CZ 2025-062. Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property, 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 located at Gunner Road, requesting rezoning from R, R1 to AG, I move adoption. This ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is CZ 2025-064.
Property located at, property located at 340 Bagwell Road, requesting rezoning from RS to R20, I move adoption. This ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-065. Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, move adoption. This ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. B. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business-
Piedmont Public Service District, Piedmont Fire Department, transfer of property. Mr. Chairman, the motion that I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to authorize the transfer of approximately fifteen point eight acres of real property located off of Highway 20 in Greenville County to the Piedmont Public Service District, and to authorize the execution of deeds and any other documents and agreements related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick with a question. Maybe staff can answer this, lawyer. Is there any clawback for this, or any procedure where if they decide to sell it, or if they decide to give it to somebody else that the county could say, hold on a second, that's not what this was intended for?
There's gonna be a motion to amend made.
Mr. Chair, I have an amendment.
Counselor Collins.
It's okay. Mr. Chair, I make the amendment. I move to amend the ordinance, adding the following language for a deed restriction.
The ayes have it. Now, all in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to D.
Question. Maybe staff can answer this, lawyer. Is there any clawback for this, or any procedure where if they decide to sell it, or if they decide to give it to somebody else that the county could say, hold on a second, that's not what this was intended for?
There's gonna be a motion to amend made.
Mr. Chair, I have an amendment.
Counselor Collins.
It's okay. Mr. Chair, I make the amendment. I move to amend the ordinance, adding the following language for a deed restriction.
The ayes have it. Now, all in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to D., which is Fee-in-Lue-of-Tax-Allocations-Ordinance. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval at the second reading, an ordinance to allot additional specified revenue collected by the county from the payment of fee-in-lue of taxes derived from designated multi-county industrial business parks located in Greenville County to the County Infrastructure Fund.
So wondering, does intent, on the off chance something would happen, and we might need to use those revenues for something else, does intent give us a little more flexibility? I mean, I do believe that we are all on the same page. That's what we want to use them for, but I'm just wondering that if-
Yeah. I'm just trying to be transparent, because I think if we do need to utilize it for someone, for something else, we can turn around and come back and say what we're gonna use it for, but when we put intent, that's just a blanket statement, and I just want to be transparent so that it's evident what we're doing.
Just to help out your attorney, could you point out the particular provision you're talking about?
Yes, it's the ordinance, in the ordinance number ten, the Fee-in-Lue-of-Tax-Allocations-Ordinance. And that's why I use the word "will allocate," because it's supposed to be an allocation, but it's item E in the middle of the paragraph.
Believe that we are all on the same page. That's what we want to use them for, but I'm just wondering that if-
Yeah. I'm just trying to be transparent, because I think if we do need to utilize it for someone, for something else, we can turn around and come back and say what we're gonna use it for, but when we put intent, that's just a blanket statement, and I just want to be transparent so that it's evident what we're doing.
Just to help out your attorney, could you point out the particular provision you're talking about?
Yes, it's the ordinance, in the ordinance number ten, the Fee-in-Lue-of-Tax-Allocations-Ordinance. And that's why I use the word "will allocate," because it's supposed to be an allocation, but it's item E in the middle of the paragraph.
Right. We can make that change. I will just point out that in the findings section, that is just stating an intent by which you would interpret the rest of the ordinance, but we don't have any problem changing that if y'all need to.
And I just want to be transparent so that it's evident what we're doing.
Just to help out your attorney, could you point out the particular provision you're talking about?
Yes, it's the ordinance, in the ordinance number ten, the Fee-in-Lue-of-Tax-Allocations-Ordinance. And that's why I use the word "will allocate," because it's supposed to be an allocation, but it's item E in the middle of the paragraph.
Right. We can make that change. I will just point out that in the findings section, that is just stating an intent by which you would interpret the rest of the ordinance, but we don't have any problem changing that if y'all need to.
Make a motion to change that to read, "County Council will allocate and utilize the additional funds."
Does everybody understand the motion?
Then again, if we need to change it, that's fine, but let's just be transparent about it.
So, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And now, Counselor Tripp.
How much is this gonna raise for roads?
I believe we said it was thirty-four million dollars.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Tripp, I think what we're doing is instead of the typical sixty-six, we give to other entities and we keep thirty-three, we're going to keep sixty-six and give, or we keep eighty and give twenty.
Okay, so what's that gonna cost? School board, the municipalities, and have they signed off on this loss of revenue?
Absolutely. It wasn't a loss of revenue. It's, they are their own taxing entities, so we give money to entities that already have their own tax structure, so the school board, if it needs additional money, can lobby. I mean, that's an elected position, so it was our supposition. They go out and lobby people to raise their taxes. Right now, the county is in a position where we, their taxes were not raised for a long time, and the roads are, infrastructure in poor condition, so we looked at ways to say, hey, how can we go forward, keep more of the money that we have, because we haven't raised taxes. Now, the school board has. If they need to raise additional money, they have the ability to raise those taxes, and those are elected people that answer. So, we thought, we're answering our constituents, is we are, this is money we've made a decision to collect, and we will, we need to keep more of that money for ourselves, and if they need to raise additional revenue, then they need to lobby their elected officials to either raise their taxes or not raise their taxes.
What about the cities? Because the cities have tried to hold the line on tax increases, just like we did for thirty years.
Yeah.
Aren't we penalizing the cities? And have we, you know, I heard from my mayor, they're opposed to this, and I just not sure this is the right move financially.
There's some hard decisions to be made, and I think we've kicked the can for thirty years, so I think we do need to stop kicking the can and keep, keep the taxes that the county collects.
And just to be clear, this is on future filos. This is, it doesn't take anything away from what all these other entities were currently getting. It would only be off future agreements.
Which, it's structured to grab anything that would be put into place now. That's why it grabs January 1, 2023 approvals to on forward, because the structure is to grab going forward and not take anything that's been billed and collected in the past, but it will affect obviously revenue going forward out of that.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Farmer.
It was my understanding that when the school board came to us regarding this issue, that we weren't messing with any of their funds. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
Well, it, well, get back to what we just discussed. It would not affect any of the current existing revenue that they're bringing in from it, but it would change to the new eighty percent structure for any future agreements that come in.
The way, Mr. Chairman, the 2025-26 budget was presented with a decrease that if you did this, if we did this, it was sixty-six percent would come to us. That did decrease their budgets, which they had already passed, so that severely negative effect to them for sure, both the municipalities, fire districts, and the school board. Moving forward, all those Fee-in-Lue-of-Taxes that have been passed, and they're collecting those revenues, will continue to collect those revenues until the end of that FLO. All new structure moving forward, they're able to account for, so the school board knows this change is coming. This is not gonna be a surprise, so when they write their budget next April, May, and they work on it, they will know what they're getting. And since they are a taxing entity, it's my opinion that they can go ahead, if they need to raise additional revenue, they can raise their taxes. If you look on your tax bill, they get sixty-eight percent of your taxes already. We get eighteen percent. So, it's, as it's a small, I mean, nothing, don't get me wrong. I have kids in school. My daughter's a teacher. I'm very for the schools. I'm very for everything, the police and everything, but at this point, that eighteen percent we had is a fraction of the taxes our residents pay, and we need to keep every penny of that to make their lives better by increasing their, make their roads better and their infrastructure better.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other discussion?
You think we could get a thirty percent discount on that like we had for the penny? Where out-of-staters would be paying for this?
You can, your counselor can propose whatever you want.
I'd like a roll call on this, please.
Okay. Roll call's been requested on the motion as amended. Do we, yeah, I think we did. Making sure. You made me second guess myself, too.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, three in opposition.
Thank you. The motion passes. So, we will now move on to ordinances at first reading. Start with Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Project Visionary. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Project Visionary. I present for a first reading an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a Joint County Industrial and Business Park, 2010 Park, of Greenville and Anderson Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain property owned by a company known to Anderson County as Project Visionary.
Thank you, and that will stay on the council floor. And we will now move to committee reports. We'll start with committee of the whole. Counsel Bradley.
On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint the following. Matt Maron to fill one vacancy on the Greater Greenville Sanitation District. Denise Ernul, how you say, E-R-N-U-L. If I can't say it, I'm gonna spell it, all right? I know. Jane Kiznel, Matthew Nakell, Paul Swackard, to fill four vacancies on the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. Robert Foster, Scott Johnson, and Teresa Slatt to fill three vacancies on Historical Preservation Commission. Tempest Dozier, A.J. Johnson, Jessica Owens, Thomas Sanders, and Toby Seesmore, Seesmore, to fill five vacancies on the Human Relations Commission. Cecil Beckner, Samuel Chancy, James Hoard, Jack Logan, and Greg Summers, to fill five vacancies on the Library Board of Trustees. Joseph Blake, Brad Campbell, and Scott Kilgore to fill three vacancies on the Museum Commission. James Moore to fill one vacancy on the Plenary Commission. Peter Matthews to fill one of the two vacancies in Tribe Upstate.
All right, thank you. Dr. Fant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to divide the question to vote on Great Greenville Sanitation District appointment separately.
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
I was told this was gonna be sent back to committee.
It will. As soon as we vote, and then we'll vote on all the rest of them, then my next motion is to send it back to committee.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And then-
We vote on the rest of them collectively, and then I'll come back.
All right. So, everybody understand the other appointments? The motion made for these appointments from Vice Chairman Bradley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so that'll be B through H.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Fant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to refer the Great Greenville Sanitation District appointment back to committee of the whole.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
One other thing, right quick, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Dr. Fant.
I want to ask, a lot of people in the community came tonight, so I certainly want to recognize those who believe that, and encourage council to retain our representation in District 25, and not let one district that comprises only five percent of Great Greenville Sanitation have forty percent of the representation on the commission. Would you please stand? Thank y'all so much for coming.
All right, Councilman Bradley.
On behalf of the committee, I move to open a special ten-day application period for Tribe Upstate for Disturbing Committee, Special Tax District.
Thank you. Everybody understand this motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I know we don't have a committee report from our Roads, Infrastructure, and Public Works Committee, but I just want to share, we had a really good committee meeting this afternoon, and anxious for my colleagues to see what's coming out in terms of the presentation we received from our public works team, in terms of road paving, road reconstruction, bridges. It was excellent work, very interactive. It'll all be online, and just looking forward to that conversation here on the dice, but wanted to share, we had a really good meeting this afternoon. Thank you.
I was thinking that.
Absolutely. Look forward to seeing that. So, moving to the next item on the agenda, we have public comments. I believe we have one tonight. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Selena Tobias, and her topic is the Greenville County Library System and Schools.
All right. Welcome.
Hello, council. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Selena Tobias. I'm currently a student at USC Upstate, and I am interested in proposing a topic to the council. To begin with, I want to present the topic on bringing a higher level of community outreach into the public library system and incorporating the Greenville County schools within that. I believe a larger educational aspect to a library system, such as engaging the library with other public places and recreational areas, could be effective for the community. Start off with, I looked at the library systems, and there's branches like Anderson Ridge, the West Branch, Briar and Malden, that have a lacking in calendar events versus areas that are well-funded, like Five Forks and the Hughes-Made Branch. So, I want to advocate that Greenville County schools should step up and provide some examples on how students should interact with recreational areas in our cities. I want to bring up the Unity Park. The city, and I'm sure the council, put a lot of time in composing a park that draws everyone in from all around the community, so the schools should benefit off of that. I want to start with saying that there could be ways that the businesses within Unity Park, the ones actually located there, can provide and bring students in. You could do events in which there could be like book scavenger hunts. Students and teachers can dress up, host event tables, and local businesses can also bring in money and showcase books that the library may have. Other than that, I believe Greenville County schools can also host field trips to Unity Park as they do Conestie and Malden. This can bring books into nature by having books that relate to nature, like butterflies, insects, and stuff that might captivate all ages. Other than that, I believe this topic is important, because Greenville is a fastly growing community, and promoting the youth and youth literacy- Greenville is a fastly growing community and promoting the youth and youth literacy is important just as taking care of the elderly and the older population. If people have public events to go to such as library events, it's an important way for the community to support each other by being alongside one another and providing the towns with youth with a possible, positive environment for their free time. A well-connected, educated community is powerful as it can lead to town unity on other issues. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have administrators' report. This should be interesting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I just wanted to invite you all to our Citizens Academy Luncheon, graduation luncheon that's coming up on November 18th, 11:30 here at County Square and hope you can all make it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have requests and motions by council members. Anything from my colleagues tonight?
Chairman, I don't, I don't have a motion, but I do want to give some recognition to scoundrel last night. They won a Michelin Star, which is a huge deal. I remember, I was ten years old and you wouldn't go downtown past nighttime. And unfortunately, back then, I watched my grandma get attacked by somebody. But just, I think just the fact that we've come this far is a huge testament to the greatness of the growth in Greenville and I'm excited for what else this brings. And also, last night, I tried to get a reservation and it totally crashed the site. So, I will not be dining there on my birthday this year.
Gotcha. Thank you for sharing that. All right. Anybody else?
Move adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.